Record, shall we re-adjourned at our...rejoin the meeting at 6:45? We would need a new motion in regards to the appointment.
Krista, the ta...the motion to ta...the motion to table was rescinded.
Right.
So, the prior motion is still on the table with, I think during the vote count.
I will...I'll renew the motion to table.
Alright, thank you.
The table?
Yes.
Second, do you want to then add the third person?
You add the third person and consider whether we want to do it now or want to wait till April.
I don't have any problem having the third person, but I don't know if we can since it's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
So, we'll table it tonight then.
You're gonna bring it back next month?
Next month, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna bring it back next month.
Bring all three.
Oh, no, I'm...no, no. You got two people here.
Right.
Bring back the one individual next month.
Next month.
That's what you said you'd do.
I will do that.
Do we have a motion to table?
Yes.
On the table that we should really see some discussion?
Is the motion seconded to table to the first meeting in January, is that correct?
Yes.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
No.
Councilman Turk?
No.
Councilwoman Gavin?
No.
Councilman Girl?
Nope.
Mayor Gerani?
No.
Motion was denied.
Move the appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded to a point.
Right.
Mary Babbage and Dan Vera. Councilman McFarland?
I'm gonna pass.
Councilman Morris?
You know, I vote aye. I, you know, just sort of like this seeing the other gentleman done all at the same time. Still kind of not clear to me why they weren't all done at the same time, but I will vote aye for Mr. Vera and Ms. Babbage to be appointed.
Councilman Oderkirk?
I personally like Ms. Babbage and Mr. Vera who's present. I've seen them work on the board and I know they have a passion for the Rialto. I have issues with the timing, with the politics of this. I'm gonna vote no based on that.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
I'll be starting discussions in executive session and with apologies to Mr. Vera and Mrs. Babbage, I will abstain.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye, and put Mr. Thornton on the next meeting, on the agenda.
Motion carried. Next is the approval of agenda. Is there a mo...a motion to approve the agenda as written with the following change, the addition of a proclamation following the licenses and permit applications?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded to approve, Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, appointment of Mayor Protem. Is there a motion to appoint Councilwoman Coleman to serve as Mayor Protem for the term January 1st, 2015 through March 31st, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded to approve, Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Now, should I abstain on this? I'm kidding, I'll vote aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
You do vote here for your election.
Motion carried. Next, council committee reports, CTIS committee report.
The CTIS committee met on December 11th in council chambers. Committee members are myself, Councilman Hug, and Councilwoman Betty Gavin. We discussed many things and due to my voice, I'm gonna have Scott show the presentation that he gave us at the CTIS meeting and Betty or Larry Pocken at any time, and I did bring these to for review. So, give us what you got, Scott. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the agenda that we discussed last day is right before you on your screen. The four topics were the proposed city newsletter that got a fair amount of discussion previously, our Internet access services contract, our IT professional services contracts, and IT hardware maintenance contracts. As I said, all of those were reviewed and were recommended by the committee to bring forward and we'll go through each one of them briefly. The city newsletter, in the discussion a couple of weeks ago, I don't think a lot of the details of this were really kind of brought forward. I think the discussion centered on $38,000 and whether or not that was best spent on this type of project. Jim Hock received a proposal from one vendor at this point, which includes up to 41,000 copies distributed to the homes of those 41,000 people throughout our city. Page newsletter, four colors on all pages. They would perform all the layout, the digital copy, the advertising. Basically, they porch deliver and bag everything and the frequency, we could change that frequency if we want to, more or less. This is a summary of the charges related to that. The eight pages, you know, payout charges, printing charges, delivery charges. Cost per issue is $9,500. Four per year would be 38 grand. If we move that to a 12 page, it would be over 42 grand. That was the discussion. I think what the committee suggested is that we do a trial on this thing and we would do that beginning in mid to late April. Any other comments?
So, then we would only have three issues this year.
We'll be putting it out for other quotes, RFQs.
You know, I think basically the idea...the notion was, part of our strategic plan was to improve communications to the community. City newsletter was embedded in that. Jim got one quote. He wanted to bake it into the budget so that we could get something off the ground, but we would go off and do competitive bit, you know, a competitive bid on how that would be put together.
And I'm passing around samples that the committee had and as the committee looked at all four of them, we agreed to model it after the Hoffman Estate newsletter and bring it to the council, take a look.
These were sample newsletters.
What, John? Did you have a question, John?
I was just saying, was this a sample from another municipality?
Right, right. All four of those are samples and we didn't want the newspaper because it looks too much like local newspapers. So, that's why we went with the other newsletter. We thought Hoffman Estates was the best. And then we also agreed to that any content that goes into the newsletter would come to committee first for approval so that it would be generalized and wouldn't be political. Okay, right?
Yes.
And so, that's why I passed those samples around.
Say it again, I missed that part. Political, I got you. Excited, I tried to listen to the meeting a little bit on the internet and I was in and out and couldn't hear it all, but go ahead.
So, he chose the Hoffman Estate one?
Oh, okay.
And that any layout or any printing, any story that goes in before it goes to print will come to the committee for approval.
Good.
So, we have some type of...so, it won't be political. It'll always be information from the city going out to the citizens.
And just, I'm sorry, ask a question?
Sure.
The parts I listened to, and that's why it's being held off till April, correct? So, it's not considered political?
Right.
My only concern is then what happens, and I'm all for this newsletter, but what happens at the at-large election? Do we not print one then or that political season?
No, 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 no.
Because I know in Troy Township they have one and there was always an article in there from Joe Ball's supervisor and different trustees and different highway commissioners and I thought it was very well done, you know, but did it go out? How many times a year did that go out, Jim? Do you have any idea?
Heinrich, I know Joliet Township does one of the supervisors here. Maybe he can answer that since he's here.
Three times? Three times a year? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Well, again, the content will come to us first before it goes out.
Good.
It'll be up to the committee, what will go out and any appropriate.
Next one is the Internet access services contract. We did a competitive RFQ with three vendors, Comcast, the incumbent, UrbanCom, and AT&amp;T. Comcast is a low-cost bidder. We're recommending a two-year contract. We're increasing our capacity and lowering our costs from our current year and it is included in the 2015 budget that you have before you for consideration. Next one was the IT professional services contracts. Again, this was a competitive RFQ process. Fifteen vendors were solicited, 12 responded. Our vendor rates are confirmed at equal or lower than where we were at in 2014 and we use that to maintain a preferred vendor list, which is in the council memo on your packet this evening. We're recommending the same funding level as last year, so we're not looking for an increase there. It is included in the financial 15 budgets. Hardware maintenance contract, this was an open, public sealed bid process. It was available to all viable vendors. Four vendors picked it up. Sentinel, CDWG, Heartland Business Systems and Advanced Technology Services. Only one of the vendors submitted a bid. The other three declined to bid for reasons listed on the slide. You know, one believed they couldn't put a competitive offer together to meet the service level requirements that we've defined. The second one could not provide certified climbers. I think you know that we've got a lot of tall assets in the city and we use union labor who are certified climbers to climb those things for, you know, insurance and liability reasons. They couldn't provide that. The last one could not satisfy our law enforcement, video surveillance system support requirements and so they declined to bid. Basically, we're recommending the one bid, which is very comparable in cost to our current costs. However, it is including some additional items that are being monitored and alerted and supported. So, you have before you a recommendation in your package at $28,350 per month over a three-year period and it is included in the 2015 budget that you're under consideration as well.
Question for either Councilwoman Coleman or Scott. Were these services ever housed in-house?
No, and the reason is, is that, you know, you're real...we really cannot afford to bring in the type of skills and expertise to do hardware maintenance and support. Organizations like the one that we have, Sentinel and others that picked up the bid, they have specialized expertise and it really makes more sense to move to an organization like that for this to kind of focus. If we were to hire certified climbers and people that have all those other skills, it would cost a lot more than what we're bringing forward.
Can you explain what a clim...what would they be climbing?
They climb all of our water towers, our communication towers. They get up, you know, 200 feet in the air. They're specially trained. They have to be recertified on an annual basis. It's a pretty sophisticated thing that they do.
So, this isn't hardware maintenance of like, this company, I believe, provide us the iPads and maintenance, that type of hardware? This is more external hardware?
Right. This is our network, our radios, our towers.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Councilman Turk, there was another part to your question. What you started in April. In order to put out a quality piece, we wanted to get one done in January. In order to get a quality piece and to come back to committee and get approval, there wasn't enough time.
Good.
So, by doing three next year, it won't be as much as the quarterly one and we're gonna trial it and see how it goes.
Yeah, I know. I've seen Troy Townships and Joliet Townships and they're both quality, informative pieces, so I'm sure ours will be as well.
That's the other reason as well.
Okay.
Any Councilman Hug or Councilman Gavin want to add anything?
No, I'm...I was excited about the newsletter. I think that our residents deserve and expect as much communication as possible. Good, informed residents make great residents, so I certainly anticipating the new newsletter.
Yes, we discussed this at length.
Yes.
And not everybody has a computer or access to a computer.
Absolutely.
And with that said, that concludes our report.
One quick comment, because in our discussion at length too, just so people know, those that do have a computer, they will come through the committee and through the council. After we've had this for a while, we discussed that we want to go to an electronic one and cut down on costs for the hard copy for those that sign up, but that's down the road. You know, again, this will be a trial period of three issues and we'll see how it goes and...am I correct?
Yes, we were correct on that. We were basically looking at the broad digital divide that we have here in the community. And so, at some point, those that want to come off of the paper piece and go electronically would be fine, but we do have a digital divide and we must supply those residents with communication, great communications. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Jim?
Economic Development Committee report.
The Economic Development Committee met last Thursday at 4 o'clock. Consisted of myself, Councilman Turk, Councilman Hug. We discussed the new Displanes River Valley Enterprise Zone and the board voted unanimously to adopt it tonight. We were also brought up to date a city-owned building in Wright Field at Silver Cross Field. There is a developer very interested in it. He wants to have a bar restaurant on the first floor and the second and third floor would be apartments. He's looking into it and he's going to get back to us, but when they took him on a tour, he was very interested in it, so that's all I have.
Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee comprised of Councilman Hug and Councilman Girl and myself met at 5:30 this evening. We reviewed the...had a discussion in the 2015 budget. The committee voted unanimously to recommend the budget to the full council pending discussion at tonight's meeting. We also reviewed the personnel summary conference, travel and seminar expense report, treasure dispersments, regular claims, and found them all to be in order and recommend their approval.
Public Service Committee report.
The Public Service Committee met yesterday. Councilwoman Gavin and myself reviewed the contract exchange orders, pay estimates, final payments, found them to be in order and recommend their approval. We also reviewed six of the special service areas that are on tonight's agenda and also recommended them.
You show no other reports. Consent agenda, approval of minutes. It's recommended the minutes of the special meeting held on November 20th, the pre-council meeting held on December 1st, the regular meeting held on December 2nd, and of the special meeting held on December 8th, 2014 be approved as recorded. Treasures dispersments for November 2014, $10,764,601.87. Regular claims for November 2014, $2,415,863.63. It's recommended treasures dispersments and regular claims be received and placed on file. Council memo 596-14, regular payroll for November 14 through the 27th, 2014, $3,304,864.41. It's recommended said regular payroll be approved. Council memo 597-14, physician vacancies. It's recommended the city manager be authorized to fill four part-time urban forestry intern positions. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded to approve the consent agenda. I, Councilwoman Coleman?
I'll vote aye with the obtaining my employer. I'll abstain.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye, and Jim, thank you for the forestry positions. We need those. Thank you.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Licenses and permit applications, council memo 598-14, issuance of a Class B liquor license at 926 Gardner Street, Eden Bar. It's recommended this Class B liquor license be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded to approve, Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Just to verify, this is an existing establishment with liquor?
No, it's been closed for quite a while. This establishment closed quite a while. It was a liquor establishment. I'm not sure how long it's been closed, but it's been a while.
Can we check the proximity next to the school there? Doesn't it butt up to the ball diamonds in it?
There was a liquor license there before.
I vote aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next will be the proclamation. It's proclaiming National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. I believe Ms. White is here to accept the proclamation.
Whereas the National Coalition for the Homeless is a national network of people who work to prevent and end homelessness while enduring the immediate needs of those experiencing homelessness are met and their civil rights are protected. Whereas the Coalition's programs are centered around public education, policy advocacy, and grassroots organizing and are focused on the issues of housing, justice, economic justice, healthcare, justice, and civil rights. Whereas each year since 1990, owner or near December 21st, that's my birthday, so that's a great day, which is the first day of winter and the longest night of the year, the National Coalition for the Homeless has sponsored National Homeless Persons Memorial Day to bring attention to the tragedy of homelessness and to remember our homeless friends who have passed away. Whereas the second consecutive year, Maryland Farmer, Executive Director of the Joliet's Morning Star Mission Ministries Incorporated, will hold a memorial service for those homeless who have died in the city of Joliet over the past year. This year's longest night homeless memorial service will be held on Sunday, December 21st, 2014, at 7:30 PM at the Morning Star Mission, 350 East Washington Street. In Joliet, the event is free and open to the public. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Geranti, Mayor of the City of Joliet, Illinois, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby proclaim December 21st, 2014 as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And we congratulate the National Coalition for the homeless and Joliet's Morning Star Mission on their continuous efforts to end homelessness in Will County and across America dated the 21st day of December 2014, Honorable Mayor Thomas Geranti.
All I want to say is thank you. Thank you very much. I know our guests would really appreciate this and just thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for getting us that information.
Yes.
Very quick. Thank you.
Next is a public hearing for the 2015 annual budgets for the city of Joliet, the Joliet Public Library, and the Foreign Fire Insurance Board.
Anybody want to address it? Wayne Horn, Times Weekly, here in Joliet. I had a question about the foreign fire budget, foreign fire insurance board. One, do they spend that money every year? Is there any
I think, I believe it's an annual carryover. Whatever they don't use remains in an escrow account.
Are those figures available?
Yes, they are.
You release those figures?
Do I have them?
As well as the members of the board?
I don't.
And according to what I understand about the foreign fire insurance account, it's used for things the city does not, equipment that the city does not provide to the fire personnel. What kind of equipment would that be?
If I may, I'm familiar with this. Not necessarily. They can buy self-contained breathing apparatus, et cetera. They can buy things that the city provide.
Do they?
Yes, they do.
Is there a budget for that? They have a budget?
What they do is they meet. They meet with the chief. Where's the chief? They meet with the chief and the chief says that we could use this and sometimes they pay half, the city pay half, sometimes they pay it all, but they meet and discuss that.
Okay. Is there a budget though that we could see?
I...sure, sure.
The chief had a meeting at 6 o'clock with ComEd that he couldn't miss, so he will be attending and maybe he can address that later.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Counsel?
Yeah.
I have one and maybe Jim, you can help us. Is there anybody here from the library? There's been discussion about their budget and I did read their justification letter and maybe you can help me. It sounds as if there's some concerns here that they're dipping into some reserves for the 2015 budget. Can somebody kind of go over what's going on over there?
Yes, they are. They requested a increase in their tax levy, which I talked them down from. I asked them to look at their reserves. When I reviewed their budget, what they're asking for was $350,000 for capital improvements to the building. So, they are utilizing that amount out of their undesignated fund balance or their reserves so that they can do that. The other thing that I committed to them is we've got $150,000 in the proposed budget to move forward on examining all of the city facilities to develop a capital improvement and maintenance program and I committed that the downtown library building would be part of that Phase 1 and included in that study.
So, the levy's staying the same?
It is.
And what's the dollar amount? Because I'm looking at fund balance in terms of revenues. And maybe you said it and I missed it, I couldn't hear you, there's an echo. How much are we taking out of the reserves or fund balance to?
$350,000.
Okay. Is there a reason why no one's here from the library to do a presentation?
I'm unaware, no.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Yes, ma'am. I won't repeat all the comments I made last night, but I did speak of the high crime rate we have here in Joliet and more urgently, the number of homicides that have happened in recent weeks. There's been a lot of talk on the council and with neighborhood groups and if you go on and speak to people, they talk about the lack of neighborhood police officers. The neighborhood police teams are not fully staffed. This council made a commitment several years ago to do that. We aren't doing that. Initially, Mr. Hock, the budget presented only allowed for the hire of one police sergeant. Since that time, Mayor, there was some articles in the paper, I think you took some heat over, and we came back and amended the budget. You found $600,000 that you took away from the fire department budget to allow for the hire of four additional police officers.
Excuse me, that was suggested by the city manager.
Okay. So, I, last night I identified along with Councilman Girl, in our health and welfare account, we believe to be over, around a million and a half dollars that it's overfunded. And I, Jim, asked last night, and I'm asking again today, if we reallocate some of that money that was overfunded in that account towards the hiring of additional police officers for the specific purpose of staffing and getting the neighborhood police team back where it was prior in Joliet, prior to the budget cuts. Again, I don't want to repeat the arguments, but it seems to me like we were able to find $600,000 literally overnight, which it begs the question, I'm not sure how the fire department's gonna be able to operate without that money. I didn't hear a lot of feedback from the chief, whether it was over budget in the first place or whether that really is gonna put a crimp under their services. But if we could come up with that kind of money from one specific fund, I can't believe that there aren't other sources of money and I think we've identified one of them. So, it's something I would like to see. I don't know if you have a proposal for the council or not, but it's something I certainly am calling on that they have done. The other issue that I have, and this is a timing issue, last night, the Rialto people came and made a presentation as well as many of the people who are opposed to the marquee. I think they're doing a great thing by opening up their meeting tomorrow night for the public and I think that public input is necessary. I wonder if it's appropriate that we're voting on this and funding until the citizens of Joliet have a say. As was pointed out by one of the citizens last night, this is public money that we're using. Having said that, I personally think that the Rialto needs the $600,000 they get from the city and I'm not gonna be responsible for closing down the Rialto, but I do think people have a right to have their say and I don't think it's unfair to allow that to happen. So... So, Jim, I guess if you can address the police issue first, and then the timing of this second, I would appreciate it.
Councilman, the, it would cost about $403,000 to add four additional police officers to the department force. The chief had a request for five additional officers, but that was related to the occupying the substation over at Union Station. We aren't ready for that yet. I do believe that we will, positively, when our new train station and bus station open, and we've got the security system down there, that we will need full-time staffing at that substation, and more officers will be needed. But that's probably 2016 and maybe even 2017. So that is on the horizon, and we will have that need. The chief had requested the three additional NOPT officers, which you are funding in the proposed budget, along with the sergeant over that division, because it'll grow from the existing three, or 11 officers, adding those three. They'll need a sergeant to supervise and oversight of their activities. I'm in total agreement with you that the neighborhood operations is important to open our communication channels with our residents and to support them and have them comfortable reporting to our police department suspicious activities that they see in the neighborhood and working together with that neighborhood officer to, as a deterrent to any kind of increased crime rate. At this time, though, if you were to say that you found $400,000, I'd rather give them the additional 13 vehicles that I didn't approve, because that's the approximate cost. And I didn't approve that because I'm being cautious in terms of what we're funding. And buying the vehicles would be a one-time expense, whereas hiring four officers would be a reoccurring expense in future years and isn't as flexible if, you know, suddenly our revenue stream is, you know, changes, because what's going to happen in Springfield is questionable with a new governor and whether or not the expiration of the income tax and local government distributive fund revenues potentially changes. So I'm trying to be cautious. Our eligibility list for these officers won't be ready till mid or late February, and it's questionable how many officers we could even get into the academy at any given time. So I would suggest taking a hard look mid-year, seeing where we are in our expenditures in the Health and Welfare Fund, taking a look at where we are in terms of training and getting the officers that you're going to authorize onboard and getting them trained, and seeing if we can get further academy positions reserved for additional officers. In terms of the Rialto, personally, I believe it's apple and oranges. The $600,000 that the city contributes to the Rialto is strictly for their operations. And the concern of the public at the moment is outside of that budget, and it was a donation over and above their annual budget. And so it really doesn't have anything to do with that. I'm in full agreement with you, and I'm sure the rest of the council, that the public should have input into that process. And I believe it's tomorrow afternoon that the Rialto is going to have a public hearing that they've moved into the actual Rialto Theater to accommodate all the residents that possibly will show up for that and express their concerns. But I don't see that decision related to the funding that we provide, which is for the day-to-day operations.
I would, okay, wait a minute. Did you receive the email today from Randy Green? He sent us both an email.
I did. And I got your response, too. I don't know if I was supposed to see that.
Well, I don't know. But there is, they met with Zerkies, and there is some flexibility. They're going to talk about it. So there is some movement there. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's right, I don't think it's fair to hold this $600,000 donation over their head, because without that, I'm afraid they may close. Now, do you want to close the Rialto over this? I certainly don't. I'm not going to vote against the $600,000. Okay? Hopefully tomorrow at 4 o'clock, something can be worked out. Maybe yes, maybe no. So. Also, I think we all agree that we need more police, there's no doubt about it. Okay? But we also need cooperation from the citizens. There was just a murder at Joliette McDonough. According to the newspaper article, there was a lot of people there, but nobody stepped forward, nobody seen anything. So we do need more police officers, but we do need the cooperation of the residents. That is on top of the ones we budgeted. But I think to hire them now may be fiscally responsible. I think we should wait until mid-year, see what our trend is for revenue and expenses and insurance costs. And at that time, we'll be able to make a decision on those revenues and expenses. At this time, not knowing what those will be, I don't think is, we should take that chance. So I think we should delay this. I have no problem, if I'm here, six months from now, if the revenues are strong and our expenses are down, hiring more police officers. But to do it now, I don't think is fiscally responsible. Jim?
I just want to follow up. I think it was about a month ago, Councilman Oderkirk mentioned to us about the Rialto dipping into some reserves. I'm not exactly sure what the fund name is, and I'm sorry about that. But Mayor, I think you men-
Artist Fee Fund.
The garb, say that?
Artist Fee Fund.
Artist Fee Fund. And Mayor, you mentioned here at the dais, and I think everybody agreed with you, and I think Councilwoman Quillman kind of gave some history of establishing the fund, is that you said you wanted to see the financials. It's been over a month, and I've yet to see any financials before us. The only thing I've seen come before us is a letter requesting revenue. Is there a reason why, especially when we're approving their allocation, that they're not listening to your request of providing us their financials, an audit? I mean, did you receive it, and we never received it?
If you're going to comment on my statement, get it correct. I says before I allocate another $250,000, I want to see their financials. That's what I said. They're not getting the $250,000.
So we don't have a right to see the financials?
You have a right to ask them. That is what I said. If they want, before I allocate $250,000 more dollars, I want to see their financials. That's what I said.
So, Mr. Hock, is there any way we could, you could request the Rialto to have their financials given to us?
Certainly.
An audit? A budget sheet, year-to-date?
Your Honor, I think if I'm, I'm pretty sure that Homer Rogers just completed that audit in the last few weeks over at the Rialto. And we, our finance department does get a copy of that audit. So I don't know if it's prepared yet, but it should be pretty close to being prepared, because I know the field staff was over there auditing not too long ago.
I think it was pretty clear that we wanted to see their financials from that last meeting. So I would just like to see a copy of their financials, see where they're at, see what desperate need they are. Maybe there would be a motion and some type of information going into the budget for additional revenue. But again, I'd like to see how they're operating, where it is that they're having deficiencies, and what exactly is happening with their financial status.
Your Honor, just going back to the police, how many NOPT officers would it take to make the full complement? How many more do we need? I don't know. Does anybody? Well, if I can-
Well, there's-
In 2008, we were fully staffed at 23 officers, one lieutenant and three sergeants. We currently add 11 officers. We have one officer that's doing double duty between the crime prevention officer and his neighborhood, and one sergeant currently.
So to bring it up to pre-recession numbers, we probably need 12?
Yeah, you'll need 12 officers and two more sergeants.
Okay. Two sergeants on top of the-
No, no, one sergeant on top of the one that was-
Was it, are there two in the budget?
No, one is for training, and one is for-
Mayor, one thing that, I'm not sure if you understand what the neighborhood police teams do. You made a comment about the recent homicide and the lack of witnesses. And Chief Jensen, correct me if I'm wrong, the whole premise or the idea behind neighborhood policing is that these officers are different than patrol officers or detectives that are assigned a case or given a call. They establish a relationship with the community, so when something like this happens, they, the people are comfortable talking to them and are comfortable giving confidential information, that they're not going to be targeted by the offenders. And again, I've talked about my own experience, and we talked about it last meeting. I'm a little frustrated, because it seems like everyone on the council agrees, but we're not taking the appropriate action. It works, it's worked in Joliette. You can look at the crime rate, where we were at in the '80s or the '90s. NOPT was started in Joliette in the mid-'90s, and there's a direct correlative reduction in crime. It's been taken away, and crime is turning back up. And I think the comments you made are exactly the reason why we need to get these officers back out there, so when something does happen, people in the communities, especially minority communities that may have a distrust of the police, will feel comfortable with that particular officer approaching that officer and talking to that officer. That's the whole rationale behind it.
I am very familiar with NOPT officers do. Councilor, who is-
Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of comments. You know, on the heels of what Councilman Oderkirk said, I was going to point that out. You know, you made the suggestion that there was maybe witnesses. You have to wonder if they feel safe enough with the lower police presence. You know, they're afraid of the bad guys, you know, coming after them. So I think we all agree on that, that we need more. You know, we certainly, when you talk about public safety in any city, including Joliette, it's fire and police. And we've worked fire back to its pre-recession level, where it's fully, fully staffed. Scott, as the chief said at the last meeting, Chief Formals, who's not here right now, they've got their 30 floaters, which makes a huge difference. I think that's why you're able to bring the money down on the overtime. So now it's time that we concentrate for public safety on the police. First off, Jim, when you, JH, when you and I talked, and I appreciate it, because we were able, over that week after December 2nd, we were able to bring back, forward four more police officers. Of course, that was prior to the fifth murder in Joliette since Thanksgiving. And two of them are out west. So, you know, I'm serving my people well by, you know, I don't know if you're aware of that, that we've got the NOPT officer who will be stationed out of the far west side, District 1, and a large portion of District 3. You know?
About half.
Right, right. And then we've got the other one, which we call unofficially the mall district. But in that same conversation, I was just doing my math, longhand. I understand when you told me that the police chief had asked for 10 police officers and two sergeants, we've now given them two sergeants. You said that we have four that are designated for the multimodal project. That still leaves a balance of three. I would like to see at least three here. Our chief, I do believe, knows what we need. He, Tab Jensen, everyone is out there in the front lines, and I'm not an expert in policing. So I understand what you're saying. We don't need the four for the multimodal, but that still leaves a balance of three just to get the streets safer. So, you know, I do have to agree with Councilman Oderkirk that we need probably to look at Councilman Girl's suggestion about moving some of the money in what might be an inflated projection on the Health and Welfare Fund, and look at tonight, adding three more police officers. I had a couple more notes, let's see. As far as the Rialto, two questions. Did I hear you right, the $600,000 that the council approves on a majority basis is only for operation, not for capital improvement?
No, no. They're, they do have a capital budget.
No, no, the $600,000 we give them.
But the money that's given for the marquee is over and above and outside of, you know, without that donation, they had no plans to spend money on the marquee.
No, I understand, Jim, no. But you said, the $600,000, you already explained that the $600,000 we give them is for daily operations only and not for any capital improvements.
Oh, no. Let me correct myself.
Okay.
It's for their annual budget, which does include some capital expenditures. But nowhere in their projections in future years did they ever suggest that a new marquee was going to be part of their annual budget?
Right, no, I understand that.
They were relying on outside contributions over and above their annual budget to fund it.
Joe, I understand about the marquee, and I understand about the donation, which I think myself and everybody up here, and I think the community at large, would, you know, has thanked Mr. Zerkies. That was my, I was just wanting to, the $600,000, what used to be $725,000, $600,000, I thought you were saying limited, now you've clarified it and said, no, that some of that money, the budget needs. So everybody here seems to be talking about a Rialto audit that will be due. Has there ever been, have they looked at doing a consultant, business consultant best practices? Because if there's any way, maybe fresh eyes coming in, to reduce the $600,000 without threatening the Rialto, as the mayor pointed out earlier, I don't think 15% would put them under, but it would hurt them. That's what Randy said last night, Mr. Green. You know, maybe you talked to Rialto, too, about the city and Rialto working together to bring in an independent consultant to look at best practices, to look at things that maybe many of us here haven't thought about, that might raise the revenues. That's what we're after, right? And therefore, if we can raise the revenues, we can lower the city portion, but we can do it smart. So if you might talk to the Rialto management over there-
Sure.
-and explore that option. And I think that's all I have right now, but I do really want to see, moving forward, three additional police added this evening.
Since the board members' hearing, we just got reappointed. Dan Vera, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just to answer a question here. Was the audit done, and when was it done, and is it available? Oh, Dale, how are you? Can you answer that question, please?
My name is Dale Evans. I've been finance manager at the Rialto for 31 years, and yes, the audit was completed in November. We needed a little bit more detail given to them, and that was completed in December in their process of completing that this month.
So it'll be done by the end?
Hopefully the end of this month.
Okay. That answers your question. Thanks, Dale.
Anybody else?
Sir, I want to go, kind of take it back to the NOPT officers. And I certainly agree with my colleague that they are needed. We understand the impact of what's going on in our communities, and we certainly understand that public safety is number one. We have to keep people safe. And so I am in total agreement that we need to bring that back up. But I do want to say to the communities, too, and you're absolutely right, Mayor, we need cooperation from both sides. And so as we work to try and fill our NOPT offices, because they are crucial in the communities, and we have seen in a couple of communities where they have made a significant impact. So we need that. So I want to work, as we go through this budget, as we go, if we're looking at it mid-year, I still want to look to see where those funds are. So let's continue to peel through, peel back, look underneath the couch cushions and everything else, because we certainly, we certainly need to get our officers back out there in the community.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chief Formhals is here. Maybe he can address, Joe. Prior to your coming to the meeting, there was a question about the foreign fire tax and whether or not the types of things that that group spends their money on, and whether or not that rolls over year after year if they don't spend all of it.
Sure. Please. Mayor, Council? That money is, the foreign fire tax money, is money that the City of Joliette receives from individuals that purchase homeowner's insurance from companies that do not have their home base in the state of Illinois. So Allstate is based, I believe, out of Schaumburg or somewhere up north. So somebody that had Allstate homeowner's insurance would not pay a foreign fire tax. But somebody that might have, I think Liberty Mutual maybe is, Councilman Hug, maybe you could help me out?
It's a durative state, yes. Allstate's up in North Philly.
So they would be, you would be paying, I believe it's 2% of the premium towards the foreign fire tax, which that money then comes back to the City of Joliette to the Foreign Fire Tax Board, and they are able to use those funds for improvements within the fire department. Currently, there's probably, I think there's probably about $275,000. I believe we just received a check, or we should just be receiving a check. So our balance, starting next year, should be about $275,000. We do not, we do not spend the money. If, we are not required to spend the money within the calendar year. It does roll over. Some items that we purchased this year were, we purchased three Gators for use out at the racetracks for transporting patients, Scott amps for our radios, for our SCBA, our self-contained breathing apparatus masks- Scott amps for our, uh, radios, for our SCBA, our self-contained breathing apparatus masks. Those two purchases there, uh, in, and then we also purchased some dive team equipment and arson team equipment. Those purchases came out to be about a hundred and three thousand dollars there. We spent about forty-six hundred dollars on EMS carts, EMS, um, cots and batteries this year. And, uh, we purchased a welder for, uh, we went in half with the City of Joliet, with our fire, fire department budget money to purchase a welder, four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And that was used for repairing fire department equipment. So those are some of the purchases that we made this year with, uh, with the monies. And, and that money does roll over year after year.
Thank you.
Chief, um, some years ago, quite a few years ago, that money, I think, used to go into the general fund until the Foreign Fire Tax Board was created and then recommended, uh, items to be spent on, correct?
I, I believe so. And I believe, uh, there was a state statute passed that, that, uh, created the boards.
Created it, right.
And Joliet's not unique. Almost every municipality has a Foreign Fire Tax Board within the state of Illinois.
Correct, it was legislation passed since spring.
Thank you.
Since this was all started because of the resident and, and local journalist, Wayne, did you get your answers that you needed?
Where's the budget and where's the books? Uh, you would have to ask, that's what they're booking.
What was the question?
Where's the budget and where's the books?
How are you loading up? Those meetings are, those meetings are, uh, is it the, uh, first Tuesday, I believe it is, of every month. They're posted, agendas are put out. Eric Mattson has the, uh, has the checking account. He, he handles the books, bookkeeping there for that, for that board, so. It's, it's within the budget, Mr. Godaddy. It's a, it's a line item that is placed in the budget, but it's more of a pass-through account within the City of Joliet. Well, if you want, if we do put together a budget, I can get that for you tomorrow if you want. I can email it to you. I know, I know Eric puts together a generic budget, you know, equipment. Yes, correct. I can, I can email that to you if you give me your email.
Thanks, Chief. Any other comments?
Mayor, since we're discussing this, is the levy staying the same?
We have no input for the levy, it's two percent, I believe, and I believe that's by state statute.
That's based on your insurance premium.
If there's more, if there's more people that purchase homeowners insurance from communities, from companies that are based outside this state of Illinois, then the amount of revenue that we have increases. More people that purchase their homeowners insurance from, say, Allstate, our, uh, our contributions or our revenue increases.
I, I noticed this line I am on here and, and Mr. Horn, thanks for addressing, bringing this up again. I don't see any, uh, actual revenue from 2014. I'm seeing two hundred and twenty-three thousand and thirteen, and then now we're budgeting three hundred thousand. Is there a reason why nothing's listed from 2014?
Well, the three hundred thousand should be the carryover amount and the anticipated new revenues from 2015. So that's when we should be starting January.
Thank you.
Your Honor, just one comment, going back to the, uh, NOPT. You know, I, myself, and I think a lot of people would like to see it get back to two thousand and eight levels. Probably won't happen for, but I think if we start phasing over some time, we'll get there. But I, I'd like, I think Mr. Hock's suggestion is, is good to look at revenues as they come in. The, the list isn't good until sometime in February will be established. And then, um, we have to talk to the chief, see how many slots we can get. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to even looking at it in April or May or, or whenever. Just, you know, as soon as we can get them in, so. But, um, I'd like the suggestion. I think it's responsible.
It's your pleasure, folks.
I would move we approve the 2015 budget.
A quick, uh, question. If I wanted to make a motion to amend for the three police off, the additional three officers, he's got a motion now. Should that happen before his motion?
Yes.
The motion on the floor.
It's a motion on the floor, if it's seconded. We have to vote on that. If there's no second, then you can make the motion.
Well, you can get the motion on the floor and then amend that motion.
Right.
Make a motion.
I would make a motion that we.
His hasn't been seconded yet.
We need a second to get his motion on the floor and then if you choose to amend it, you can do it at that point in time.
Yeah.
And then you vote on that. Correct, Mayor?
Correct, but we have no second.
I'll second, give it on the floor.
And I would assume that, uh, under Robert's rule, at this point, I can make a motion to amend. And I would so do. Uh, so amend for, or make a motion to amend for three additional police and utilizing a shift in money from the health and welfare account to cover that expense that was described. You said four hundred and five thousand before, so whatever it would be equivalent to three, Jim, is my, is what my motion would be. I'm assuming that's roughly three hundred and, three hundred thousand, three hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Second.
Question?
Questions?
Does anybody know if we can get the adequate numbers in, at the academy? Do you have any idea?
There are a few different academies that we can look into. The, uh, one of the training captains, uh, that, that does that. I can check with him. It may not be an issue. It depends on when they start their dates. The list is not good until February, then we have to do the hiring. It depends, because there's a, anywhere from like a ten to a twelve-week academy. So we have to determine on when they start and when they end, when they'll redo another session. So we'll have to check into that.
Okay, thank you.
Two, Mayor?
Sure.
I'd just like to make a comment with respect to, I know Councilman Oderkirk brought this up. It's been certainly a topic of conversation here over the last couple of weeks. But with respect to the six hundred thousand that's allocated in this budget, I'm not sure who brought it up here, uh, this evening, or maybe it was brought up yesterday, as far as there's a meeting tomorrow, uh, which I think is a good thing, to basically solicit public input with respect to the sign. And then should we be moving forward on this budget with the six hundred thousand dollars? You know, with that meeting being held tomorrow and that sort of thing. I would just like to say that I, I, I think we should. You know, just because we approved this budget today, the six hundred thousand dollars which is in there, that money cannot be technically spent until January of two thousand and fifteen. So everybody's going to be heard, but we, the appropriation doesn't go, this budget's for two thousand and fifteen, so the appropriation is not in effect until January first of two thousand and fifteen. So that money can't be spent until the beginning of the new year. So I think we should all be comfortable that that meeting's going to take place before those dollars are released. Just want to make, clear that up.
Any other comment? First, we have to vote on the amendment. No, we have to vote on the motion as amended.
It's been motioned seconded to approve Council memo five ninety-nine dash fourteen and ordinance approving the 2015 annual budgets for the City of Joliet, the Joliet Public Library and the Foreign Fire Insurance Board with the following amendment, adding three additional NOPT officers, shifting the funds from the health and welfare accounts in the budget. Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Girl?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hug?
Aye.
Councilwoman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilwoman Morris?
Aye.
Councilwoman Oderkirk?
Aye, and thank you for, for listening.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
I vote aye.
Motion carried.
Wait, I want to make another amend, no, never mind.
Council memo six hundred dash fourteen ordinances for the.
Excuse me, Krista, Mayor, can I say one more thing? You know, the budget is a working document and can be amended at any time. So if we can't get the spots or something, we can make arrangements, we can make whatever arrangements we have to do. I'm assuming, correct?
Well, I would, excuse me.
Yes.
If I, I would imagine this is based on getting the spots.
Right, right.
We don't, can't get the spots, they're not going to hire them until we get the spot.
Okay.
That's a safe assumption.
Right, thank you.
That was kind of what I was thinking, sure. Yeah, when, when the police can get them in, then we'll start paying them when you hire them, right?
Right.
There, there is also a chance that some of the, uh, people that we hire are already officers that are certified. So, because sitting on the panel, we had a, quite a large number of officers that were applying for the position. So if they're already certified, then they just need to go through our FTO program so they don't even have to be sent to the academy.
And how long does that take?
Uh, it's usually about a three to four-month period.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor, just to piggyback on Councilman Turk. If we cannot get them in here, what's the odds of using the dollars towards overtime? To get more folks on the streets?
Obviously, that, that is an option. I don't really see the, uh, a big ordeal trying to get three officers into academy from February to December. It should not be a problem. I don't want to speak out of turn, but there are a few different academies that we can try. Once we know that it's approved, we can also lock in some positions.
Well, I think that was the, uh, the counter to adding three officers was the fact that we couldn't get them in. So I'm looking at a plan B. If we can't get three in, let's look at taking guys that are off-duty and bringing them on for some overtime.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's definitely, uh, an option.
I heard a thousand people applied.
I believe it was somewhere around the number of eight hundred.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
And Jim, I would, I would assume, worst-case scenario, I understand what, uh, Tab Jensen is saying, but worst-case scenario, um, in response to Councilman McFarland, if we did have a delay, it's completely within your discretion to use that allotted money for the overtime if you so choose, because you're not coming back looking for new revenues, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. There you go. Krista?
Council memo six hundred dash fourteen, ordinances for the levying assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2014 and ending December thirty-first, 2014 in and for nineteen ninety-four Joliet Special Service Area Number One, Joliet Common Shopping Center Project, the nineteen ninety-six Joliet Special Service Area Number Fourteen, Joliet City Center, and two thousand and nine Joliet Special Service Area Number Seven, Park Hill Subdivision, the City of Joliet, including the Joliet Public Library. It's recommended said ordinances be adopted.
Second.
Questions?
One.
Yes.
Mr. Hock, there's been a lot of discussion, um, regarding the, the courthouse maintaining it, downtown Joliet and, and the city's role in funding it. Is this a revenue stream that we need to potentially look at for next year? Tap it into it or expanding it to help underwrite some of those costs that are being requested by the county?
You're talking about a special service area?
Correct. Would that fit into that, or?
Well, I, I'm not sure whether or not, I, I believe the people within that, fifty-one percent of the people, the property owners within that special service area have to sign a petition that they want to be taxed to pay for that, so.
So like, for instance, the four hundred and forty thousand that we assess?
Right.
Any of that potentially, I guess what I'm asking, go towards the, the new courthouse? The development, or is this pretty much earmarked and?
No, that, that's earmarked, uh, for, it's, it's up to that organization and that board to decide what their expenditures should be. Could they make a contribution? I'm not sure. But, uh, uh, if, if you're going to set up an, another SSA, they have to petition the city with fifty-one percent saying, "Tax me this amount for this purpose."
So I understand it correctly, the four hundred and forty thousand basically goes to the City Center Partnership Board? And they go it out for, for the City Center area?
Right.
Okay.
Along those lines, um, maybe give us a brief, um, discussion, talk about the meeting we had with the county concerning the courthouse downtown.
Sure. Can I do that under City Manager's report?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's been motioned seconded said ordinances be adopted. Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo six oh one dash fourteen, ordinances for the levying and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2014 and ending December thirty-first, 2014 in and for the City of Joliet, including the Joliet Public Library. It's recommended said ordinances be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Krista?
It's been motioned seconded to approve. Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo six oh two dash fourteen, ordinance proposing the establishment of the twenty fifteen special service areas one through six. It's recommended said ordinances be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Krista?
Motion seconded to approve. Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo six oh three dash fourteen, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Joliet and the International Union of Operating Engineers for twenty thirteen through twenty fifteen. It's recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Krista?
It's been motioned seconded to approve. Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Vote aye, and thank you again, Jim Hock and staff, for getting this done. Unfortunately, you're going to be negotiating again real soon. It's two years late, but they, aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Councilman Oderkirk said it well, aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo six oh four dash fourteen, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Joliet and ASME Local four forty for twenty thirteen through twenty fifteen. It's recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Krista?
It's been motioned seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Pauline, warm up, you may be going in, she's losing her voice.
Sorry. Motion carried. Council memo, sorry, six oh five dash fourteen. An ordinance adopting and designating ordinance for the City of Joliet to participate in a new Displanes River Valley Enterprise Zone and an ordinance adopting a new Displanes River Valley Enterprise Zone intergovernmental agreement. It's recommended said ordinances be adopted.
So moved.
Second, questions?
It's been motioned seconded to approve. Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
And Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
I'm sorry? What about the gentleman on my right?
Did I miss, I'm sorry, Councilman Girl.
Vote aye.
Apologize.
He's feverish.
Councilman, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Just trying to hurry it along.
Council memo six oh six dash fourteen, an ordinance declaring certain properties as public nuisances. It's recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second, Krista?
Been motioned seconded to approve, Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under resolutions, council memo six oh eight dash fourteen, a resolution approving the twenty fifteen Joliet Police Department and Joliet PSAP's nine-one-one surcharge reallocation grants. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Motion seconded to approve, Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo six oh nine dash fourteen, a resolution approving the sale of four fifty-three and four fifty-five South Ottawa to the Warren Sharp Community Center for Community Garden. It's recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Been motioned seconded to approve, Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
I will regretfully have to extend, my wife serves on the board of this wonderful social service agency. We support this agency one hundred percent, my wife and I, my entire family actually. They do a wonderful service to the community. I actually spent some time out at one of the gardens that they have now, and it's just tremendous for the city, so we're very happy about this, and I have complete confidence in this council that this would be approved even without my vote. That's why I extend. Thank you.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
With pleasure, aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Access bids and contracts under a ward of contracts. Council memo six eleven dash fourteen, approve a professional services agreement for the Mary Crest Phase One Water Main Relocation Surveying and Drafting Project. Council memo six twelve dash fourteen, approve a contract for West Side Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestor Cover Replacement Construction Project. Council memo six thirteen dash fourteen, award a contract for the blended phosphate solution purchased twenty fifteen. Council memo six fourteen dash fourteen, award a contract for the manganese sulfate purchased twenty fifteen. Council memo six fifteen dash fourteen, approve an engineering services agreement for the Rock One, Two, and Three Wellhouse Electrical Services Upgrade. Council memo six sixteen dash fourteen, purchase a Ford F-250 truck for fleet services. Council memo six seventeen dash fourteen, purchase a Dodge Grand Caravan minivan for the Tri-County Auto Theft Task Force. Council memo six eighteen dash fourteen, approve contracts for information technology professional services. Council memo six nineteen dash fourteen, approve a contract for information technology hardware maintenance services. Council memo six twenty dash fourteen, approve a contract for internet access services. It's recommended council memo six eleven through six twenty dash fourteen be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
I vote aye, make a motion that Krista be excused.
I'm promised, thank you, we only got a few more. Amendments, change orders, and payments. Council memo six twenty-two dash fourteen, approve amendment number two for the Phase One Engineering Service Assist for the Canton Farm Road over DuPage River Improvement Project. Council memo six twenty-three dash fourteen, approve change order number one and payment estimate number two and final for the Belmont Avenue Water Main Improvements Project twenty fourteen. Council memo six twenty-four dash fourteen, approve change order number one and payment estimate number two and final for the North Rayner Avenue Water Main Improvements Project twenty fourteen. Council memo six twenty-five dash fourteen, approve payment number one and final for the McDonough Street Coventry Chase Right Turn Lane Improvement. Council memo six twenty-six dash fourteen, approve change order number one for the purchase of two F-350 service trucks for the Public Utilities Department. Council memo six twenty-seven dash fourteen, approve change order number one, did a contract with Urban Design Ventures for professional services to complete the twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen consolidated plan. Council memo six twenty-eight dash fourteen, approve change, change amendment number two and payment request number six for the professional services contract for Phase Three Engineering for the Cherry Hill Road and New Lenox Road roadway improvements project twenty fourteen. It's recommended council memo six twenty-two through six twenty-eight dash fourteen be approved.
So moved.
Second. Questions, Krista?
Been motioned seconded to approve, Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
I'm sorry, Krista, I wasn't really paying attention. Can you read them all again, please? Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is city manager report.
Jim? Take a break.
Yeah, take a break.
Yes, last, last week, there was a meeting with Will County, our, our legal staff along with theirs, public utilities department representatives. The mayor was there and county executive Larry Walsh attended, and the primary purpose was to move ahead on getting sewer lines out Leroe Way Road, and there are several properties. Each one has unique conditions, situations, individual property owners, and we've been, it's a time-consuming task to, to get right-of-way acquisition, you know, easements through properties, railroad crossings and so forth. But we're pushing forward to make that happen to accommodate future development of the counties out, out that way. The other concern as it relates to having the new courthouse continue to be located in downtown Joliet is discussions about the desire of the city to acquire property for Chicago Street to go through. We do have money in the budget this year for the actual design of the construction of that, and, and the use of, along with that is the use of the current judge's parking lot there, reconfiguration of Chicago Street, and also our desire to expand the plaza, take down the state's attorney's building once they move out of that and acquire that. The county's got desire, you know, they've got existing parking and, and predominantly Ottawa Street Garage, but also Scott Street. So, so we need to talk about what it is that the city can offer to be able to accommodate the, all of the employees that work for the county and, and paint a picture that makes it desirable to continue to have the court downtown. So those discussions will continue, and we're going to try and move them forward the first of the year to get some progress on them so that it's not, these issues aren't lingering out there one at a time, but we have one big package deal that we can, which will endure, not knowing when they would break ground on a, on a new courthouse, but those incentives, those agreements would, would lay a foundation for continued location in the downtown area.
Okay. That concludes your report.
That concludes my report.
Um, new business, not for action.
I have one. Jim, I just wanted to thank you, there was some discussion here last month about public notices going out for committee meetings that are offshoots of the council, and I noticed that your staff has been doing so, so thank you.
Certainly.
Mayor, council comments, Mike?
Senator, I would just like to wish yourself and the rest of the council a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and the same to the staff and to citizens of Joliet. I'd like to thank the staff from all the way from Jim Hock to our part-time people for the dedication and hard work they've done this past year, excuse me, and I hope everyone has a great holiday.
Jan?
Well, I have no business talking, but I have to. Couple of things, Jim, where are we, or maybe Jim Trisnek can answer this. The, the Black Road project, I see that they're gone and there's just blacktop thrown over that, and it's lumpy bumpy, what, what are we doing with it?
And it will remain that way through the winter.
Really?
Uh, it's level enough so that our plow trucks can get over it.
What level did it need the other day?
Yeah, basically, the water main work is done, that was Jimmy again, the utilities project, that work is done, the patching just got done this, about a week ago, or actually last Wednesday they opened the road up. So we're going to have to put up with that during the winter, and we'll have to just keep making little monter.
How are our trucks going to shovel that?
Well, they'll plow it, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll get through. And obviously, in the spring, we're going to grind it off and we're going to overlay this street.
Lumpy bumpy, okay.
Yes, unfortunately, you know, as I said, we got delayed because of the utility project, so that's how it's going to have to be for the winter.
Going getting, you know, calls, okay.
Sure, yeah, I have, I have a few people asking me to ready too.
If I may, Jan, Jim, is that included, was that included in the bid grinding it and overlay it, or?
That's in a public works contract. Our first resurfacing contract, and the contractor has agreed to maintain his prices for the spring, to do it in the spring for us, so as soon as he can in the spring, he knows he's got to get that work done, wants to get that work done. Quite a bit of work, quite a bit of dollars that'll come back to our contract at that point.
Sorry, Jan.
Okay, and then, thanks, Jim. Where are we with the people mover project over at Amtrak Metra?
Uh, we're still talking with Amtrak about, pardon me, they're committed to purchasing something. I informed them that Metra has put up a couple of shelters there, potentially blocking the turning radius, and, so they need to get a hold of Metra. They haven't made any time commitment, however. We did, we do know that Congressman Foster's office is, is trying to cajole Amtrak to get moving on this project because they unders, understand the concern of the residents and the commuters, and to accommodate our residents getting up that ramp.
Okay, thank you. Also, I would like to wish everybody a healthy New Year. I hope you don't get this bug, and happy holidays, stay safe, and I'd also like, I had a long list of, I asked Saul Garcia, who does our volunteers for the JCTV, and he gave me a long list, and unfortunately, I left it at home, but I, I want to thank each and every one of the volunteers that puts on these programs and comes out and on their own time and films all these special events and the parades and the council meetings and committee meetings. It's a lot of work, and they have a great commitment, and I will get that list the first of the year, and I will name those names. So Saul, thank you, I know you're back there, thank you for all your hard work, and I want to just thank our staff, just to, just to echo Councilman Turk's comments, because I'm, I'm about to lose it here myself, so Merry Christmas to all my council members and staff, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, happy birthday to Councilwoman Gavin, thank you for letting us know.
Look it out there, didn't you?
Second of all, to my colleagues who are sick, I hope you all feel better, and our residents who also are sick, there is a bad bug going around. I had a child who had a hundred and forty degree fever the other day, so please take care of yourself, look out for elderly residents, please, and then finally, Merry Christmas to everybody, Happy New Year, please have a safe holiday, thank you.
All right. Yeah, just like to say Merry Christmas and to everyone, everyone. Mike kind of covered it right down the line, so just, and have a happy holiday and looking forward to seeing you all next year.
Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I just share a short story, I noticed some admiring looks at my tie. This tie was given to me by my daughter, she was six years old, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but at schools you can buy those little trinkets for twenty-five cents, for fifty cents, for a dollar. That year, my son also got me something when he was seven, but it was either a pet rock or aftershave, I don't remember, more of a guy thing. She bought me this, and I've worn it every Christmas and every Christmas season since then. It's kind of tattered, the music maker doesn't work anymore. Used to play Jingle Bells, I know, kind of corny, and she's now a fourteen-year-old beautiful young lady. My son's a fifteen-year-old young man that I'm extremely proud of, and my wife, well, you all have to consider the fact she lives with me, she's a saint. With that said, the Hug family doesn't always get along, but we certainly love each other, and we disagree, and then we come back together, and, and I just want to share that spirit, not just with the council, but with, with my larger family, my District One family, if you will, and my City of Joliet family. Lots of times we're going to disagree, and that's healthy to disagree, and it's free in a free society, but we all come back together, and, and certainly not just at Christmas time. So I just wanted to share that story, that this many years later, it, this represents something about unity to me, and about family first and family always, and I think we can expand that to the larger community, and I think a lot of us do, and I encourage more of us to do that. And with that said, I'll tell my family I love them, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah to my large family, Joliet entire, and to my fellow council members, and if I missed any holidays that I'm not an expert on, my apologies, that's what the happy holidays was for, thank you.
I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
And I'd like to do the same, wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a very prosperous New Year. To all my colleagues, thank you so much for embracing me and helping me along here, I think that, that you had your hands full with me, but that's. To the staff, just an awesome, awesome, thanks for the work that you do and the efforts that you put in to move this city along to its great state, so I really certainly want to thank you for that. I just kind of want to veer off to my family, and you know who I'm talking to, I wish you a very safe, safe holiday, and I'm calling you to action in terms of how we solve this crisis that we have. So look for us to be meeting in the community with you, we are looking for solutions to stop this madness, to stop this violence. So look for me, I will be ringing your doorbells, I want to thank in advance the neighborhood council leaders, Ms. Ulmer, and who is going to assist us in pulling the community together, and we're going to have some good family conversations on how we stop the violence. And so having said that, may you all be blessed, may God bless you all during these holiday seasons, thank you.
I just want, you know, Jan, to thank JCTV volunteers, there's a group of volunteers that, I don't know what we in the Rialto would do without them, that's all the men and women that volunteer at the Rialto, many, many hours, I want to thank them and wish them all a Merry Christmas. Just a couple of things, last Thursday at noon, I attended a meeting concerning the